A week, a week at the Department of Public Instruction. We began or we concluded last week believing that we were asked to provide some guidance to schools by May 15th on what it might look like or what might need to happen in order for a school to consider opening their buildings and property to students and to others other than non-essential staff. And by the time I got back to work on Monday morning, that timeline had been accelerated a bit to believing that I needed to have the guidance completed in partnership with a lot of people, not just the Department of Public Instruction or our team here, but we are working with the Department of Health, Department of Emergency Services, our Governor's Office, and other local stakeholder representatives. And that we started that work and we were informed that it would be best if we had that guidance completed by Friday. And as it turned out, by the last night after I had a meeting with the Governor, until about eight o'clock last night, and that timeline has been accelerated even more. And I delivered the first draft of the guidelines to our Governor this afternoon, and we'll be hoping to get it out to our K-12 Coordination Council, of which Alexis is a member of that K-12 Coordination Council, along with your Board President, your statewide Board President, and tomorrow, by the, later this evening, for some feedback from them. And hopefully, we may have some sort of announcement. I, the Governor alluded to in his press conference today, that he would make an announcement with possibly those approved guidelines by, on Friday. So, we have had quite a week. I will tell you that the four buckets of the guidelines will include, number one, first and foremost, the logistics and operations of safe and healthy re-entry into our physical school buildings. We will also include some best practices and some things that boards and communities should consider as they consider moving into their buildings and move from a distance learning to a, to a face-to-face learning. That would include academic support, ideas that they might be able to use their CARES dollars for, and the social, emotional, and academic development needs that may have arisen while our students were in distance learning. So that is the biggest update, and I am going to just provide a little bit more update with something that is important to our school board members. But then I really am going to open it up to questions because I believe that there are probably a ton of questions that would likely be typed in and/or spoken when we, from all of you that, that may be more specific. The CARES Act dollars that are specific to K-12 are called ESER funds. It's the Elementary Secondary School Education Relief Funding. So that ESER funding has been received by the North Dakota Department of Public Instruction. It became available to North Dakota to apply for last week, Thursday. We immediately applied that day, and we received notification today that North Dakota was approved for that $33.3 million. And we will be holding a training and webinar session for all of your school districts tomorrow at 1:00 PM to provide some assistance and training on how our local school districts may be able to apply, apply for that funding. That funding, as I stated, will be delivered out to our school districts on a formula basis that will be very similar to the same amount of dollars that you have received in Title I-A funding. And the intent of the Department of Public Instruction is to make this application process more of a certification problem, process. So the, to cut through the red tape of bureaucracy that is often, too often associated with this type of funding, we have eliminated that, and we'll get the money out to our school districts as quickly and efficiently as possible because we know you as school board members and you with your superintendents and business managers will need to receive this funding as quickly as possible to provide the relief of the expenses that so many of you have incurred with COVID and are likely to experience as you get our students and teachers back in the classrooms. The final thing that I will share with you that is related to school board work is that earlier also this week, North, DPI submitted a trio of executive order requests to our Governor's Office to consider an executive order. One of those executive order requests included the suspension of the year-end funding balance. I'm going to actually get the word, verbiage for all of you. So I'm sure to be specific in what we have asked for. And that is, just maybe I won't, yes, I will. So, the trio of packages includes that, the executive order request asking the Governor to suspend provisions regarding school districts' ending fund balance and the reduction of state aid payments if a school district exceeds that allowed amount. So again, we're asking the Governor to suspend for this year the requirement of the year, the ending fund balance. And the other two are less related to school board work, but important nonetheless to your students. We have asked the requirement for the class of the 2020 seniors for the CTE scholarship due to a lack of work keys testing options available this spring. We're also requesting that he include in the executive order the waiver of the requirement of earning a C or better in courses required for the CTE scholarship and academic scholarship for the second semester of this school year. This would allow pass/fail grades as well as Ds to count for the scholarship for this semester only because schools and students adjust to this student distance learning. And the executive order would also suspend reeducation requirements and renewals of DPI credentials, not of teaching licenses, but of credentials that will impact your library and media specialists, school counselors, high school principals, and school superintendents that may have had a credential, that credential expire March 15th through September 1st of this year. So that is my update for the evening, and now I'm relying on all of you to fill in with questions so I can make sure that we are answering the needs of most of you. So I believe Donna is on and she can read some of the questions. Patty, you might want to pop in with some questions. And anyone else can unmute yourself, star six, if you are on the phone. Patty will unmute all of you as we move into this section and/or type in questions in the chat box.
This is Donna. There are no current questions in the Q&amp;A box, so I'm assuming they might just ask you directly.
Okay.
Hi, Donna. Can anybody hear me? I just, I'll be the brave first person to ask a question.
Thank you.
So I asked, I asked a question last week, forward-looking out to the fall with CDC coming out and discussing second surge. And now we're a week later and it seems like there's been, you know, a marked shift in approach. And I think last week, you know, the, the conversation from your perspective was, you know, certainly there are some counties and some districts that are sitting in a better position than others for reopening. You know, in light of, of the reality that we're now quickly approaching May, I understand that some district guidelines are, were requested to be submitted by tomorrow or even Friday for reopening plans. I get a sense that, is there, you know, some push to have all districts considering reopening in this academic year? And then, you know, is there, I guess, recommendations from a superintendent, state level, you know, in curriculum and, and planning-wise that effectively our students are going to be able to transition back to the classroom and really receive the benefit of being in class? So I think that's kind of the first, you know, question or first part of the question. And then the second part is, is are there guidelines? I assume there will be guidelines for, you know, numbers of students in a class and spacing, and whether students should be wearing masks when they return to class, you know, if it depends on what county or, you know, what PPE teacher should be, be, should be getting provided, and, and maybe the logistics of that too. Could you touch on any of those guidelines?
Yes, absolutely. And so that's what we've been working on since, since late last week, and that's the accelerated timeline. That is, that for the first draft of the guidance that we sent to the Governor for his review this afternoon, much, most, almost all of those things, I would, every one of those things that you asked about is in, within the guidance document that we have shared with the Governor and will be sharing with the K-12 Coordination Council later tonight. So I would encourage you to reach out to Alexis to share any of your thoughts and opinions on what that guidance should be. She is your representative, I believe Polly is as well, on the, on the K-12 Coordination Council and can carry that message if there is something missing. But we tried to, we focused a lot on the, the new CDC guidelines that came out. They actually aren't published yet, but CDC has provided them to the White House, and we were able to obtain a pre, a pre-public, you know, unreleased copy of that, which we, we use to tailor and guide our, our guidance on the logistics of face masks, distancing, hand sanitization, vulnerable populations, sanitizing of school properties, bus routes, or, you know, school buses, cafeteria, commons areas. All of those things are addressed in there according to the most recent CDC. What we have to do after the Governor has provided input, after we've been, then been able to release it to the, to the K-12 Council for our actual stakeholders input, we will need to get that to the Department of Health. They have assigned someone to us that is the former epidemiologist for the state of North Dakota, Larry Shirely is his name, and he is an expert in disease control. And so he will review our guidance based on those CDC recommendations and determine what exactly needs to be North Dakota or Maine. I would, I would hesitate to say that there is a push to have everybody back. I, I don't think that I would make that assumption or that, 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 I wouldn't draw that conclusion. What I would say is that the Governor is concerned about some of our students who have may have fallen through the cracks and wants to get a handle on how many students haven't been in contact and how many have not been able to continue their learning. And so he feels, he's been hearing from some of our school leaders, a number of our school leaders and, and a number of our teachers saying that there just has been no contact with any of these students. And so there's a growing concern that Governor Burgum wants to make sure that, that he's using that data to make the best decision. So to, to balance that concern with the concern of the, the health and safety that COVID is presenting and, and to take those two into consideration. And so I, I wouldn't say that there's a big push, but he does have an understanding that, so bluntly, my recommendation is that there needs to be certainty sooner rather than later, that I believe that our school district leaders, our school board members will, will really rise to the occasion and make the decisions to do what is expected of the state and the Governor in his, his decision. But the uncertainty is, is probably causing some more anxiety and some, at, some, some elevated amount of stress. But he also then, the Governor also comes back and says, but the learning is still occurring. We need to keep focused on the distance learning. There isn't an economic factor. We still need to make sure that the surge doesn't come. So I'll, I'll tell you that my official statement has been, I've been making recommendations to the Governor, but at this point, he's asking us to provide more information to him so he can make the best decision. He understands that, he, he is hoping to make a decision this, at this Friday's press conference, and he wants to make the best decision that he can. So I'm visiting with the Governor on a frequent basis, providing him the information, and we are preparing guidance so you won't be left alone in your local school districts to make decisions, even decisions about whether you should open or not. There's some guidance in there about what your community is and the number in your county, number in your, you know, of staff, that type of thing. So there is guidance there. I hope I've answered your question.
I have a question. If we do open up for the last few days of the year, will every student be required to attend? Or you can still do the distant learning in conjunction with the returning of the school year?
So I believe, you know, that is in the guidance as well. Some practices have been floated out there as best practices. Start with just elementary, start with just seniors, start with a smaller class. The options for our larger school districts might be A classes and then B classes, and then deep cleaning in between. So again, there, there are certain, some certain, when students are in session, there are certain, what the Governor calls some non-negotiables, what we in school world call tight, that those are some, some expectations of students and distancing and, and those types of expectations of sanitization and hand washing. Those, those are the tight, but how a school district chooses to get there is, is, is going to be up to the innovation and the very specific local, local, unique situations that are out there. That's the way the guidance sits now. But again, it's not been approved by the Department of Health or Governor at this point.
Okay, Kirsten, this is Donna. There's about six questions. I will read them and you can answer them as we go. The first is, we have parents with large hot lunch credit balances. In the past years, we simply roll that forward into the next school year. This year, those balances are quite large. I was looking to other districts to see what they are planning on doing, issuing refunds or simply rolling forward.
Okay, so I think local school districts, there are, you know, some school districts actually even have foundations set up for these things. Considering the, the unemployment, the oil and gas, I think there's going to be so many different situations out there and unique situations. I, I truly understand that, you know, just because the child nutrition meals have been free, the cost to prepare those meals and the personnel and wages have been still being incurred through a program, child nutrition program that has traditionally been self-funded. That's in part of our CARES Act, or excuse me, our, our guidance and some of the CARES, CARES, the ESER training that will be occurring tomorrow. The funding that you'll receive and this relief funding will be allowable to use for those, those certain, those aspects of, of the lunch, the lunch costs of, that, that are unpaid. And so again, it's an allowable use, and I believe that's an important discussion that your local school board should and can and should have regarding what would be best for your community and what's, what's the expectation of the taxpayers within your community as well as the, the community members.
Next question. Can you please restate your comments about the CTE scholarship?
Certainly. Okay, so the CTE scholarship has several components in it where a student must meet certain criteria in order to be eligible for the CTE scholarship. One of the criteria is that they get a certain score on the work keys, the ACT Work Keys test. And since work keys, ACT has not had suitable testing options available this spring before our students graduate and leave, available to make that, that work keys test administration available to them. We are asking the Governor to suspend the requirement of that ACT Work Keys test only for this year's 2020 graduates and only for that portion of the, of the work keys, only for that portion of the CTE, CTE scholarship. All of the other components of the CTE scholarship criteria must be fulfilled only and only for this year's 2020 graduates will the work keys test be waived or suspended. The other aspect for both the academic scholarship and the CTE scholarship is the fact that there is a requirement that students must earn a C or better in the core courses for the, for the, in order to earn the scholarship. So we're asking him to suspend that C requirement for just the second semester, just the second semester of this school year. So because of the pass/fail that many of our school districts have, have embraced, and because the distance learning is something that not a lot of our teachers nor our students had the opportunity to really be comfortable with before they began the grading.
Okay, next question. Are local boards going to be able to determine how they handle graduation events?
Well, local boards, yes. So some school boards, I know of one school board, because the seniors on my student cabinet, has already made the decision that they will be having graduation in July along with possibly prom. And so that has removed some of the uncertainty. I would imagine that even if a school district has made a similar decision like that and there comes out some different guidance that would make some, possibly some, some more immediate options available. If the Governor approves some guidance and, and the Department of Health approves some guidance, that, that board could certainly revisit that decision to have a July graduation and possibly exercise some of the new guidance opportunities. But yes, this, this will be a local school board decision. Again, but always remaining within what the executive order requires or any new future amended order.
What do you think about the low scores and low participation of work being done in e-learning from the students?
So I am, I, I guess I don't have as, as much of a broad, probably personal perspective of, of that, is, is that question, is that, that person who is asking that question may have. The perspective that I have come from a couple weekly calls that I have with this. I have a group of, of family members that meet with me every Saturday morning, and we have about an hour to an hour and a half conference call. They're my family cabinet. I have a weekly student cabinet that has about, has 21 members, and those students range from fourth grade to freshmen in college. And then I also have a, what's called the State Teacher of the Year. They are our Teacher of the Year recipients, along with the Teacher of the Year finalists from a broad span of years that have a State Teacher of the Year chapter, and they meet with me. So I will gather, I will, I will rely on their perspectives. I, not being in the classroom, you are all closer to that than I am, so I'm just relying on our teachers. I also visit with the principals every Tuesday at noon and our local superintendents every Wednesday at noon. So based on our teachers, our principals, our superintendents, our family members, and our cap, our student cabinet members, I would say that we have a broad range of, of, of experiences. I should also say that we also meet weekly with our special education unit directors on Tuesdays and a, a group of special, parents with special needs support group and advocacy group members every Thursday. So based on, on those six weekly calls that I have with those stakeholders, we have a very broad, diverse range of people that are experiencing some accelerated expectations and students who are really flourishing and doing more than they ever have, all the way down to, we haven't had students turn in anything. And we've had parent perspective get shared with me that this is truer, more authentic lessons and deeper, more attached personalized learning, all experiences that parents are have, and family members are having, all the way down to, this is ridiculous, my kid, my child hasn't seen any new homework or any new material presented to them since, since the first week of March. So they haven't learned anything since the first week of March. So that's a pretty broad range of perspectives that I'm hearing, and I don't know that there's any weight one way or the other. I'd say that I have just as many on the high end as I do on the low end. So I guess I'd be curious to, to hear perspective from your school board members. Any thoughts on that? I will say the Governor, and I talked about that significantly for a significant amount of time last night, he shared his perspective, his staff were also receiving emails and letters that seemed to demonstrate that broad gamut as well. I, I do think, I, I do, I can say that I, I know that the Governor would like to see some, some different way of measuring engagement, a different way of measuring to make sure that all of our students are receiving a high level of, of, of addressing the students' needs in this distance learning. And I don't know that he, he feels that we have an opportunity here to really up, and, and these are his words, up our game in making sure that our students have what they need for instruction.
So I, I, I can share my personal opinion, I suppose, on, you know, the, I guess the range makes perfect sense to me because I don't know that any expectations have truly been set with parents as to what this is going to look like, at least within our district. I think it, the gambit is broad as to whether it was communicated to parents as to what they should be seeing or what they would be expecting out of their students. You know, it's hard as a parent when you're not in class with your students, so you don't quite understand, you know, how much work are they doing in class? And then they come home and they have homework, or maybe they don't have homework. So I, I think, to me, the gambit makes perfect sense. And to your point about, you know, the engagement and how do you measure engagement? Well, I think from a parent's perspective, you have to set those expectations with the parents as to what should they expect to see their kids engaging in? And how do those parents understand whether they're hitting those marks or not? So I, I guess it makes sense considering the fact that this is the first time for most of us going through a situation like this. And with the rush to get something in place that occurred, that communication probably did fall through the cracks for some.
I think you really bring out a really important factor. The, the, I think this has, it's done many things, but one of the things that it has done is it has highlighted the importance of that parent or that home-to-school relationship. And what we're seeing, the most engaged students oftentimes are those students, or those, yes, those students that have, a family member, someone in their home that is pushing them, keeping them on track, motivating them. And depending on the capacity of, of, of the family member who is there and what their, what their time, what their time availability is, we are certainly seeing the students that we haven't heard from and/or touched in or have not had any contact or turned in any lessons. They, they generally are the students that actually struggle during the school year as well. So... That family engagement, school to home. And I, I think we, I, the, I've heard, heard from a lot of grandmas and grandpas that are raising their young, their grandchildren, that they're, they're exhausted. They have, you know, three different platforms because their kids are going to three different levels of school, trying to figure out the technology. So the point also that you made, I think, is an extremely important point, was the fact that we had less than two weeks to stand this up and begin implementation. So if we would have more time to be thoughtful about this, and maybe that's what we can and should take our summer to do.
Kirsten, I'll move on to the next question. It's what discussions considering liability might we as school boards be having? And little discussions considering liability in regards to opening or not opening?
So, as part of the guidance, the very first introductory portion provides some questions to ask about your community and in determining the, the risk factor of opening. And then if you have any confirmed cases, even after you've taken the immediate steps. So throughout it all, it is the recommended, some tight consultation with your state and local public health officials. So our Department of Health and your county public health officials, as well as making sure that your, your, your superintendent and your building leaders are having close monitoring of the situation within your local community and the state reports that are coming out daily.
Okay, next question. What was the special funding that is going to be available? And what are some of the requirements? Are all schools entitled to some money?
So the, the special funding is what's called our ESER funding. And it was part of the March CARES Act that was signed by President Trump on March 27. So it's the, it's the Elementary Secondary Education portion of the, of the CARES Act. I will have Patty put up the, in the chat box, the website where, on the DPI website where you can find out more about the CARES Act and you can find out specifically, individually, what your school district will be receiving. The CARES Act is $30-plus million that will be coming to North Dakota. DPI will be distributing that to school districts based on their Title I allocation last year. We did have 16 school districts that did not have a Title I allocation last year and were therefore not in the formula to receive any CARES Act funding. But those 16 school districts, I will mention again, are Apple Creek, Baker, Billings County, Fort Belenkin, Fort Ransom, Halliday, Horse Creek, Kinsel, Little Heart, Lone Tree, Manning, Marmouth, Minoken, Munich, Notton, Sweetbrier. We made the decision at the Department of Public Instruction that even though those school districts were not receiving any allocated funding through the formula that Congress had set forth, we knew that those school districts weren't any less impacted by the COVID-19 virus than the other school districts. COVID-19 virus than the other school districts in our state. And therefore, we have decided that DPI will be using a share of our SEA reserve funding, SEA standing for State Education Agency. It's their name for DPI. We will be using a portion of our SEA reserve funding to provide some additional funding, some relief funding to those school districts as well. Assistant Superintendent Matsky will be sending out a letter to each of those school district board presidents and the principal or superintendent, whoever, whatever those, whatever role that school district has in their, in their district. So to either the principal or superintendent of that district and the school board president, informing them of the amount of money that they'll receive. There is a website. Oh, can you hold on just one second, Donna? I'm going to have you take it away and give the address. I need to, to answer a tribal question.
As Superintendent Basler answers a tribal question, I will be, I'll look that site up for you. So hang tight.
Okay, I am back. They will wait for their question. So we have a call at the same time, the governor and I are on the call with some tribal leaders. And so Scott Davis, the Commissioner of Indian Affairs, let them know that I am with school board members. So Donna, if you can look up that, that website, it is on our, obviously our website. And it's under, under COVID-19. I guess the better thing to do would be to inform you of the route to take to get there. So if you go to the DPI website, North Dakota DPI website, you'll have a banner that says COVID-19 updates. The COVID-19 update have, have two areas that will be of interest to you. One will be a card that says school board. The other will be a card that says ESSER funding, E-S-S-E-R funding. And both of those cards, links, clicks, however you want to say it, will have important information for you all, you know, specific to your role as school board members under the, the school board card. And then of course, the ESSER funding to keep you informed about the amount of money and the deadlines that school districts, or excuse me, yeah, applicant, not the amount of money and the application certification paperwork that will be filled out. The paperwork is simple, quick, easy, no bureaucratic red tape. So. Any more questions?
Yes, we've got two more questions. Will staff and students have the right to refuse going back to school this spring for health reasons if schools reopen this May?
So certainly students, as always, the, a parent has a family member, whoever the custodian, or the parent or the guardian of that, that student is, they have always, you know, the, the right to, to determine when they, to send their child to school or not. Your local school board policies will need to determine whether or not staff, what, what exceptions or what expectations you'll have of both your certified staff and your uncertified staff, as well as what expectations you would want of that family in order to ensure that the child was remaining safe. So if that child, if you were, if a school district decided that they were going to return to face-to-face learning for the rest of the school year, your school board would need to decide whether they would allow those students to be excused, excused absences or unexcused absences, or if they would, you know, prefer that they fill out the intent to homeschool for the rest of the year. But again, many of our schools are done within three weeks. And so just some determinations there that, that your board policies would need to, to then be put in place.
Just to let you know, that website has been copied into the chat section. So if people want to refer to that. The next question, Superintendent Basler, is, I have three children in grades pre-K, second. Distant learning has been difficult for these younger age groups. We are both working parents and have worked through the pandemic, so we do not have the luxury of staying home and have relied on a childcare provider to help with schoolwork. So a comment.
That, that's, that is a common, it's a common comment that I had, had from so many of my sectors. So our teachers that are, have children of their own, they're, they're very, they, you know, their husband goes to work during the day, or their, their spouse goes to work during the day, whether it's telecommuting or actually physically out of the house. They have three children and then they're teaching, they're teaching, you know, classes of, of 25 children throughout the day as well. Both parents may be telecommuting from home. Both parents may be first line essential workers and their children are in some sort of childcare setting and they've worked a full day and they come home and they have a full, you know, four hours of homework to do with them or lessons to do with them. It is a common, a common way. This is never the way that we've intended to do school. It's not the way that education has been built. And there's an intense appreciation for the, the relationship and the partnership that must exist in order for our students to flourish and our families to be, feel well supported with our K-12 education system. And I think that's why it's important, I may have read this last week, it bears reading again. I received a, a letter from a teacher in North Dakota a couple of weeks ago now. And she wanted me to let everyone know, if I shared it, that she's not the author of this, but she shared it and this is how she feels. And it just says, April 2020, dear parents, don't stress about schoolwork. In September, I will get your children back on track. I am a teacher and that's my superpower. What I can't fix is social emotional trauma that prevents the brain from physically learning. So right now, I just need you to share your calm, share your strength and share your laughter with your children. No kids are ahead, no kids are behind. Your children are exactly where they need to be. With love, all the teachers on planet earth. So as you wear that dual role of your school board member and your parent role, I just balance that. And I know as board members, you've probably learned a lot about trauma and social emotional and brain cortex and brain science. And what this teacher says and writes is that when there is not calm emotional environment and there is more anxiety, the brain actually physically shuts down. And there is absolutely, it's incapable of learning and retaining new information. And so knowing that as teachers now, just know that you've hired the right people in your classrooms to do their jobs. And if, if you can communicate to your community members that the most important thing is to keep that brain chemical balance in order with laughter, calm, strength and support.
Superintendent Basler, there's one additional question here. How does Department of Public Instruction feel about kids working jobs during school hours, making them unavailable for Zoom class sessions?
You know, it, it's one of those things where I have an opinion, but I certainly don't have any authority. And we, we get calls frequently about during the day and in normal circum, in normal situations, we get calls from family members and, and community members about saying this school is doing this, or that school is doing this, or this teacher is doing this, or that teacher is doing that. And that's why, and what we need to tell them is that we are only given the authority that is provided to us by our, by, by the legislature. And the legislature has been very clear that, that if they don't give us the intent of the authority, authority, that we don't have the authority to go in to make local determinations and local decisions for school boards, for school superintendents, for teachers or for students. And so that's why our partnership with our locally elected school board members is critically and vitally important, is that it truly is the, it's the, it's the partnership and it's, it's the responsibility for me to work with school board members to ensure that board members who are elected know and understand what the state legislature expects of them and expects of our school districts to operate. And then beyond that, anything that isn't in North Dakota Century Code is something that is by intent left solely up to our local school boards to decide. And our legislature does not want someone at the state level, in my role or in my department, to come in and to make local decisions about what a school board policy should be, about whether students can or shouldn't, shouldn't be able to do or not do. So again, understanding, having been a board member myself for nine years and a board president, man dad for seven of those nine years, I understand the challenge and the yin and yang, but I certainly as a board member and most definitely as a board president, didn't, knew that, that I didn't want, our board certainly did not want someone coming in from the state level telling our superintendent or our building principals what they should be telling their students to do. So although it's a really difficult job managing community intent and, and local employer's intent with what's best for students, that's part of the, the joy, I guess, as well of being able to make some very up close and personal impact on our students within our, our local school districts.
Okay, at this time there, oh, I have one more. Give me a second, I'll publish it. The question is, is there still a phase one and phase two for openings? Schools are in phase two, which was initially 14 days after phase one began?
Yes. And so one of the things that, yes, we are, there is still a phase one and phase two and you are absolutely 100% correct that the schools are closed in phase one and they reopen in phase two. And so one of the things that I would like to share with you today is the report that just came out about, and there, and again, yes, absolutely correct too, that there needs to be a decline in confirmed cases. And so one of the, so the report that just came out, and one of the most recent JIC, Information Center, Office of the Governor that came out, is the North Dakota Department of Health today confirmed that 42 additional cases of COVID-19 were confirmed out of 1,813 tests for a positive rate of 2.3%. This has been the lowest daily rate since April 10th. And so I think it's extremely important to note that when we talk about the decline in cases, the governor and the state health director are not, or state health officer are not talking about the end, the denominator, they're not talking about the end size of confirmed cases, they're talking about the percentage. So the governor has been ramping up and has been extremely explicit about his expectation that we test more and more people each and every day. At, a week ago, we weren't testing even 1,000. He made it very clear that by Wednesday of this week, he wanted at least 1,800 tests administered and results received in his office. Well, today you'll see that we have 1,813 test results. He expects that this time next week, that we will be 3,000 test results every day. And the week after that, he wants 5,000 test results back. And so even though we may be seeing an increase in the number of end cases, that is not what the governor is looking at, is looking at decline. I believe on Saturday, we were at a 6% return, confirmed cases, about 6% of our test results were coming back positive. We diminished that, we reduced that to about 4% at the beginning of this week, maybe Sunday. And I'm, I'm, I'm really spitballing here, I'm just, my days are running together and I'm, I'm just rounding up. But as you can see today, at the beginning of this week, it was a 4%. You can see today that we have more confirmed, more test results back and a lower positive rate of 2.3%. And so that's what the governor is looking at, as well as our state health officer.
So phase two is implemented 14 days after phase one is over, or are they concurrent?
They, they're concurrent as a, as a decline. And, and that's where the president has given latitude to each state and governor to determine where they started and where they needed to be. I mean, obviously, when you cut this in half, you know, it's 1%, you can't go negative, to be honest with you. And so depending on, that's why the, the latitude is there for each state governor to make that determination because the amount of positive test results were at all different places across the nation.
Okay, another question. Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Okay, you know, I just wanted to know if we've thought about, or talked to the governor about, you know, first sending, let's say our little ones back in, everything's looking different, feeling different, new routines, new rules, new procedures, new policies. And then we have, you know, let's say little ones wearing masks and their teachers wearing masks and they don't get to see the smiles and the facial expressions. Have we thought about it, all the type of emotional distress or trauma that might cause our little ones and our children going back to school?
Yes. And so that's why in the guidance that we'll be giving to school districts, school board members as well, I hope that, you know, that you will take, that you will empower yourselves and make yourself familiar with this as you help your superintendent make decisions about what's best for your school districts. That's why one of the four buckets is the social emotional. So we are asking school districts to very explicitly think about and answer questions about how they're prepared to address exactly what you described. So don't just reopen based on what COVID confirmed cases are, but, and whether you can make sure that you have enough masks or have the sanitation set, but you, we're asking school districts to please consider both the academic needs, the social emotional needs and questions that should be thought through before you decide to open, as well as the funding. So that's why there are the four buckets. The logistics of opening that the state health department will weigh in on, the academic supports that our children will most certainly need after this distance learning, the social emotional needs that not only our children, but likely many of your staff may need, this has been hard on all of us, and the funding. So yes, I'm so glad you as a board member are asking those same sort of questions. Those are addressed and, and we've tried to provide some, some leading questions for you to think through as a board and talk through as a board before you make that decision with your, with your school district leader. You should also note that part of the, the draft guidance was an included fact that we're asking school districts to consider, to, to elicit stakeholder input from their teachers, staff, families. And we ask them to also consider whether or not they would want to get board approval for that decision. Not a mandate from the state, but a consideration for a school district to make.
So another question, Superintendent Basler. Is there any legal issues for a school if kids are in school or on school property, like baseball fields, football fields, playground equipment?
Yes. As it stands now, the, as it, with, you know, barring any amendments that the governor might make to his executive order, but his executive order is very clear that he made on, on March 18th or 19th. School, district, buildings and property are restricted access to all students and restricted access to any, to everyone except essential staff as determined by the local school district. So they are restricted access, whether it's your property or, that would include football fields, baseball fields, gymnasiums, all of that.
Okay, going to circle back to the phase one, phase two of opening. And the question is, what date did phase one officially start? Do you know that?
So get, phase one is what the governor is allowing to happen effective 8:00 AM Friday.
So that is all the questions on the live Q and A. Don't know if there's anybody out there who has a question, who wants to speak over the phone?
Are you able to share the participation of people on this call?
I don't know the answer to that question. Patty or Donna?
We have two indicators, 51 on, I think, I believe called in and actually another 51 that joined by teams. Usually those numbers are different, but tonight they happen to be the same.
I just have a comment. And I, you know, you had kind of talked about this earlier, but I have been hearing from a lot of families too that are thriving with distance learning and online education. And some of them are actually loving it and they're actually hoping North Dakota does something in the future with some type of option, opting into distance learning or having distance learning groups of students at schools. I just wanted to put that out there because I know a lot of families have commented on how well this is actually going for some families.
So that's good to hear. I'm really glad to hear that. If you happen to be in a school district that is If you happen to be in a school district that, um, is experiencing some of your families, expressing a desire to have that, I want you all to be aware of, um, of a piece of legislation that allowed our school districts to apply for a waiver from the Department of Public Instruction to create those types of schools within a school, if you will. So parents that may want to opt into that type of distance learning, if you, as a school district, wanted to be creative like that and go outside of the normal brick-and-mortar instruction and, and you have a superintendent that's, you know, and a team that you're bold and courageous and, and want to do that, um, that opportunity is there for even if a state doesn't make a sweeping, um, if our legislature doesn't make a sweeping, um, move in that direction. In 2015, I worked really, really hard to get that piece of legislation in place to allow a local school district to take those steps, um, even if the state didn't allow it as a whole. So that is something that, as I said, that your patrons are expressing an interest in and it's something that you want, you believe that your school district might want to explore, offering as an, an opportunity. Please look, call our office. Anne Ellison is the person that leads that work and has been working with, you know, I think there are about, well, there is five school districts I know, well, actually know more than that. I believe there's eight or nine school districts that have leveraged that, uh, it's called Senate Bill 2186, Innovative Education, and have done those, um, special and unique things to, to meet their, their patrons' requests and their families' requests within their local school communities.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes.
I have, I have a question about the playground equipment.
Yes.
Um, we're a small school. We don't have a fence around our playground equipment. And we have had families getting out and going and playing with their kids on the playground equipment. Are we responsible to post signs that they're not welcome to play on it, or it's kind of the playground for the town, so?
Yeah, no, no, you're not. And that's, I've had this question before and I've actually, you know, visited with people that, I just wanted to make sure that, that I'm, to, to ensure that I'm providing good, good answers to this, no, you're not. As long as it's not a school-directed event and a school-sanctioned or approved activity on your school grounds, you certainly, you know, you don't, you don't have the authority to tell a family that, um, they can't, they cannot take their kids there. So don't feel any, uh, legal responsibility there. Good question. Well, not hearing any others, I will respect your time. You're all busy people. I expect that we probably have a lot more questions, um, as we move, next week, as we move through this. I look forward to visiting with you. I thank you for your service. So much appreciate your time and thank you for all that you're doing. They're not easy decisions that you're making, but they're important decisions. So thank you and I look forward to visiting with you next week again. Take care.